Welcome, everybody, to the Mark Six Committee of the Hall Meetings. Please be advised that today's meeting is available for the public to attend virtually, it's being streamed and recorded. I'd like to recognize the judicial territory of our friends and neighbors, the Dene, the Cree, and the Dunneza. People from Fort Nelson First Nation, as well as from the Prophet River First Nation and the Casca. So are there any additions to the agenda today besides what we have? Seeing that everybody's okay with the agenda the way it is, good. Is there any public comments? Anybody online that wants to comment? No? Okay, well, that brings us right to the delegation five point one staff Sergeant Rummings here. Our new detachment commander to talk about the Controlled Drug and Substances Act and the decriminalization of of some of the controlled substances. So I'll turn it over to you.
Well, thank you for the time and your audience today. Just there's a couple of things that I was hoping to discuss during this hour. One of them was an introduction because I haven't met everybody here. My name is Jason Rummings, I'm the new Staff Sergeant here in charge of Fort Nelson and just wanted to give you a little bit, I've met Scott, met Mayor and Councilor Sols, but I haven't met everybody else. So I just want to give you a little bit about, a little introduction about me and who I am and and such. So again, my name is Jason Rummings. I've been a police officer for nineteen years with the Royal Canadian Armed Police. My first posting was the Sunshine Coast Seashell. I was there for seven and a half years. General duty there and also I was in their general investigations unit, I'm close and I was in charge of their crime reduction unit there. So drugs and property crime and that type of stuff. Two thousand and ten, the end of two thousand and ten, I transferred to Prince George City. And I was a part of the opening of the CFSCU office there. So I worked at CFSCU, which is Combined Special Forces Enforcement Unit for four years, working major drug files, working with federal, federal drugs and also with our North District Major Crime Section for homicide investigations here in North District of the Peace. Two thousand fourteen-ish, I transferred to Prince George City Detachment, where I was there for about a year and a bit as one of the road supervisors. I was promoted to federal policing at a North District Office shortly after. My time there actually brought, with federal policing actually brought me to Fort Nelson in two thousand in eighteen, where I was assisting with some staffing issues here at Fort Nelson Office. So I came up for a week, is always the joke, I came up for a week, I stayed for a year. Which was, was why? Because they brought me back up this, this time around. When I went back to my standard position in two thousand and nineteen, I was transferred to Prince George City where I was the Acting Watch Commander at Prince George City of B Watch, so I looked after twenty-one employees there, Watch. I promoted shortly after that to Fraser Lake Detachment where I've been the detached commander there for the past three and a half years. And now I was a successful candidate in August. It seemed to be a long time ago for this position here. And by the time I got through all the rigmarole of the medical process with the RCMP, I arrived here with my wife in January. And we've just gotten settled and we're very, very happy to be here. So so that's a little bit about me. One of the things that
Jason, just before you start, sorry, how would you like to be called by your rank or by Jason?
By Jason, okay. Yeah, I'm very very proud, is the best way to put it. And one of the items I spoke to Scott about, Scott Berry, about recently was we were looking for a little bit of feedback of the RCMP is in relations to how the municipality has found the decriminalization, taking any issues, is there any things the municipality has sought legal guidance on, or maybe you looked at, at, you know, are there bylaws or there are things that, that municipality has looked at for, for this change in our laws and products? So when I talked to Scott, Scott said it might be a really good idea to have some time with Mayor Council and to talk about the decriminalization facts here in the province because you are a new mayor and council. So we're saying that, there is a, I sent over, and I know this just came this morning, but a decriminalization in B C fact sheet from the province of British Columbia, which I'm sure you've all received. And then I'll kind of maybe just discuss if you'd like to, one, maybe I'll just say, ask is there, has there been any discussion or issues brought forward by Mayor Council? Or we'd like for you to discuss kind of how these changes are impacting the way we're doing business?
Well, we haven't had any discussions because it's been fairly new. So there's been a a legal opinion, I think, that came through generally a couple of weeks ago, I think, that, that talked about it. But we haven't sat down as a, as a council and, and had a discussion about how it might impact our community or, or others. So I think if you want to take us through
Sure.
your thoughts, that'd be, that'd be awesome.
These are, these are the mental health and substance support cards that we are handing out and I'll make reference to them. I'll make a reference to them. And if there's anybody else that would like one, I'll leave them on the table here too. All right. So, so as we know, decriminalization of some of illicit substances in B C is the first in, in Canada to with this exemption. So this took effect on January thirty-first, two thousand twenty-three. So provincial government, you know, hopes to address and reduce the stigma around addiction and mental health issues. So the exemption in the facts here, but the exemption applies to British Colombians under, or over the age of eighteen. And it basically allows for possession of up to two and a half grams of controlled substance under the Schedule Criminal Code. So that means two and a half grams of cocaine, crack cocaine, methamphetamine, opiates such as fentanyl, heroin can be possessed without a person being criminally charged. So Fort Nelson, just so you know, that we have responded to calls for drug users are rarely charged. So that's, it's a sort of super important thing. I've been, like I said, I've been a police officer for nineteen years in the drug sections, worked in very busy detachments where we have significant amount of drug related crimes. We, I don't, I probably in my career, I've probably once charged a person with possession. So it's very important to put that into context. We don't charge anybody with possession unless they agree with the facts. This is really, in the past, we just, we don't do that, you know, such as if there was a break in order or assault, theft of more vehicle or something where drugs were found in possession, we would actually, that would be like a secondary item. So currently, when we, starting here in January, we have always well, starting in January, it's become very important for these cards to be used. But I think every police officer that I've worked with has, has been encouraging users to seek supports available through, through, through many other factors. It's always been a strategy of of people, for people that have addiction issues. But now we have these formal cards. These cards are, if you have an individual that, that is arrested for another matter, may have a controlled substance on, on them under two and a half grams. It's no criminal offense, say they're released from our cell block for a matter or they're released on a scene for another matter. We will educate them, we will basically not seize their controlled substance because they're in the province of B C as it stands today. So, but as, as most of you are aware, it's you know, it's illegal, still illegal to sell controlled substances or traffic in controlled substances. So the one thing that that is probably concerning when we all think about it is that possession of these substances are allowed in public places down, public areas. There are some restrictions and those restrictions are around schools, airports, and childcare facilities. So from my standpoint and from the RCMP standpoint, we all, we all agree that addiction substance use is a healthcare issue. Drug dealing is not, and those who are victimizing are vulnerable populations, but profiting from this are still going to be vulnerable. And that's the stance that I take at this detachment. Example of that would have been this, as Mayor Fraser and myself have discussed, is that this past January, I had Combined Special Forces Unit here in Fort Nelson on our operation. They were conducting a drug trafficking investigation here in Fort Nelson that led to two search warrants being executed. And over two kilos of cocaine, two kilos of methamphetamine, and seven firearms were seized in town. Charges are being recommended by CFSCU to the federal prosecution to men here, local men from here in Fort Nelson, who will be hopefully charged with possession for the purpose of trafficking. And so that's, that's that's sort of a segue into my performance plan. But with the, with the decriminalization, I could probably speak on the decriminalization for, I would probably say a half hour at least. But for the most part, the key points are that you know, a person is able to possess up to two and a half grams of a controlled substance. We're looking at assisting the users if they, we run across them through our police investigations to seek assistance for their positions, mental health, and the services that Northern Health have put forward. These little cards are to assist. This is the keystone information that is being provided to us. And yeah, so it's, it's a very changing, the world is changing and it's a very different landscape compared to what it was just a month ago. So we're gonna, I'm sure there's going to be lots of speed bumps and a lot of, it's going to be a learning curve for, for everybody. But I just wanted to make you aware that, that there are some significant changes within the community. And I think we're going in the right direction with, with that. But I also wanted to touch base with Mayor. So I'll follow up with, with Mayor Fraser, that, you know, if there's any concerns that get brought up about this topic.
So anybody have any questions for Jason? Counselor Nikki?
Thank you for your report. It's really interesting. I love this idea. Do we track the amount of use that these one eight hundred numbers are getting?
I am not too sure. That's, that's a good question.
I'd like to, I'd like to encourage us to do that because I know in Port Hardy with the Guasla and Alcorac Nation where there is, you know, quite an issue with drug use, nobody. We did our own little survey and everybody reported, no, they hadn't heard of anybody that used these one eight hundred numbers, including Kuis. So I think, you know, the one eight hundred numbers are effective is if they're being used, but also a little pamphlet like this of showing the local numbers of who's providing the service locally.
Good idea. Are there any other questions for Jason? I think the legal opinion from, well, I guess it was not really opinion that we thought of, it was just really, it was a bulletin that came out from Lidstone that, that basically said this is a federal jurisdiction and provincial jurisdiction and although we have the ability to put bylaws in place that, you know, if we did, we'd be getting in the way of a provincial or federal jurisdiction. So, I mean, I have, I have some concerns, but they're, they're pretty minor, minor enough that I think just it's a wait and see sort of a thing, right? And I mean, I I don't see people using these drugs out in our parks or in our public areas. Even marijuana, you see, it kind of peaked there where people were using it out in the parks and stuff pretty regularly in the jailer anyway, in the early, but then it, it, once the novelty sort of went off, the smoke in it in public, it kind of went away. So, you know, we could do all kinds of what ifs, you know, what if there was ten people together and they had twenty-five grams of coke between them? You know, and they're having a party in, in our Fraser Park. Is that, you know, is that something we need to be concerned about? I, I think the chances that it happened are about this big, right? So I don't know if there's an opportunity for us to train our staff or even a need for us to train our staff so that they understand what to be watching for in the event that this does start to occur in our parks. If, you know, if, if it's legal to possess it. Or sorry, it's been decriminalized to possess it. Then that essentially makes it legal to carry it on the street. But no, it doesn't say anything about using it on the street. Right? So I think it's a, it's a wait and see. I, I stand behind the province in this. I think it's, it's it's the right thing to do to help get the toxic drugs off the street and to get those people who need help, help. You know, that it, hopefully it'll start taking away some of the stigma that's there. So those people will ask for help because what we're doing now doesn't seem to be working. And then, you know, there's hundreds, if not thousands, of people in B C dying every year because of overdoses to a toxic drug supply. So if there's anything we can do to help you or your staff, you know, let us know, I think.
Yeah, that's appreciated.
Okay, I have one more comment.
Sure.
Scott, have we ever had any community members reach out to the municipality with regards to drug use or services? And the other thing, I wonder what the municipality could do around Drug and Alcohol Awareness Week? Maybe that's the time that we come out with our own little pamphlet on working with the health services to get the local list of services that are available. With, maybe that could come up at one of our health meetings or community meetings.
I'm not, I'm not aware specifically of anyone reaching out, looking for help. I mean, generally the conversation that's occurred from a municipal level and with health meetings is the lack of services that are available. I think that's been some of the feedback that we've heard generally regarding this shift in, in the, in, in legislation and decriminalization of the drugs is, is the, it's fine to have numbers to call and whatnot, but honestly, I mean, I'll say locally, we don't have this, this unnecessarily adequate services or you see that. But also provincially, there's a lack of services, I think, in terms of people having, have the ability to get required help that they want, for ones that want to get the help. There's some gaps here for sure in terms of available services to, to get the true help they need.
Counselor, right?
Yeah, some information to share through the Harm Reduction Committee. Northern Health has approved twenty-hour a week position of an LPN and there is a Harm Reduction Ban going to be operating in the community. It'll be one day at Prophet River, one day at Fort Nelson First Nations, and one day in the community. And they are developing resources to hand out as to what services are available in the community, fully knowing that there's not a lot. But this committee is very active and very committed to improving services in the community. And hopefully the RCMP can begin attending and that would be lovely. It meets once a month, so I can connect you if you need.
Okay. Is that everything or did?
I've got one more. So yearly, it's that time of year, March. So we, we're preparing for our annual performance plan for two thousand twenty-three, two thousand twenty-four. And I do things a little bit different. It's all, it's all pretty much the same as, is probably what has been that has been discussed in, in previous years with the Performance Plan for the RCMP. But I just kind of want to run through this. I'm looking for, for feedback. If there's something in here that you find is different, odd, or maybe we should be focusing somewhere else. Please, I'm really looking for your, for your feedback. And also if you feel there's something that, that suits the community, I would appreciate that feedback as well. So really, the, the annual performance plan is the vision and the direction that this detachment is going to be going over the next year. So I break it into three. We base, sorry, I'm going to step back for a second. So we base everything upon our strategic planning for, for the district and, and the province and so on and so forth. And what they, what our senior management does is they give us strategic priorities to, to focus on. And then we make them community specific. So one of the, the big things coming here and only being here for, for a month is trying to get the speed on, on what's been done really in the past five, five to ten years. Because we've gone through a little bit of you know, there, there's been a little bit of some ups and downs from, from the tarmboys and the steamy clouds and the Mike Eelings and, you know, Mike being, being off for the last couple of years before his retirement left some, some, some holes that need to be filled. And so, so this year I'm focusing on the three main topics. One is going to be the building, maintaining trust and confidence amongst our public and the community partners. And so what I mean by that is that, that has, we have three, three or four main goals there. One is enhance community and police relationships and very simple stuff, visibility. So I'm looking at meeting the membership here to engage with the community, be able to community events, part of foot patrols, road patrols, you know, we, we, we place one of the, we place the largest geographical area in, in the province of B C. So we want to see our members getting out to Toad and Moncho and having presence up there when we have busier events and also getting out and, and being a part of the community and increased public police visibility. Another part of that will be external communications, which will be enhanced communications with our, with our public and our partners. So my expectation, the members are that they'll be assigned different organizations within the community and, and they're going to report back to myself and Anthony, Sergeant Fletcher in relation to what's going on in the community and where we can be out there and be a part of it. Part of that is also, we're going to have a external communication piece where we are, we'll probably get our face, get a Facebook page up and running to, to provide information to the community. But also we'll be doing some more press releases within the local Fort Nelson newspaper in order to promote to the community what we're doing. Another part of that is ensuring that, hopefully you guys won't get sick of seeing me, but making sure that I, that myself and Anthony and other members of my detachment are meeting with our local and indigenous governments on a regular basis, ensuring that we're, we're, we're providing police reports to, to Mayor Council. And also like today, presenting the annual performance plan and thoughts and concerns, so opening up that, 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 those lines of communication. And then also I'm looking at ensuring that our detachment gets more involved in participating with our indigenous communities, events, increased partnerships, and ensuring that we're, we're out being a part of the community. So that stuff's pretty straightforward. The second set part of the annual performance plan are, is really the meat and potatoes of, of what we refer to as policing. But to enhance the safety and security of all British Colombians. And how are we going to do that here? We're going to focus on two main, main, main programs within, under my umbrella. Now, one is going to be our offender management program. Instead of focusing on specific crime trends such as, let's say we have domestic violence, let's say we have, have auto theft, we're going to focus on, on the persons that are committing those, those offenses and we're going to hold them accountable. So we're looking at, you know, increasing our curfew checks to known offenders and ensuring that if they are breaching their conditions and breach charges are being afforded and holding them accountable within, within the judicial system. We're also going to be looking at road safety, ensuring that we're focusing on impaired driving investigations impaired by alcohol or, or by controlled substance. And I'm looking at developing our members as well by ensuring they're getting out onto, onto the roadways and looking at an increase in, in not so much violation tickets and no sign orders, but what we're looking for is for an increase of community engagement out there with police visibility, ensuring that, that we're, we're out there flying the flag and showing the community that we're out there doing the job. I don't want them to be taken in locals. That's not, not the idea. The idea is just to get out there and educate. So, yeah, so that's, that's, that's the, the second main goal. And the third main goal is, is more for myself, is more looking after our people, the people that are, that are, that are working for, for us and for Nelson here. So I'm prioritizing the physical, mental health, wellness, and resiliency of our employees. And by doing that is, is more for, for ourselves, making sure that we're, we have bilateral communication happening with our employees. We're conducting quarterly meetings, we're having safety meetings, we're having the costables input. And because we, we all have so much input, we're making sure that we have a healthy detachment, making sure that we have social events. And, and everybody feels that they're, they're, they're you know, they're participating and we're all, we're pulling in the same direction. One of the big things is up here is that we have to be a self, a self-sufficient detachment. I can't rely upon, always rely upon the expertise from, from other detachments or specialty things. So we, I'm going to really focus this year on getting non On getting non-mandatory training provided to our members in order to uh, um. To develop and enhance their, their, their job performance and hopefully in, in, improve uh, a positive work culture as well. So those are really what, what we're working towards. Um. The second part of this was uh, just a part of our, our ULQA program, which is basically um. It's more a checks and balances to ensure that, that uh, our systems are working properly. Um, and then um, so. Quarterly, um, we have quarterly meetings, uh, just it breaks up into the cycles that, that we have. Um, but what I hope to do uh, with uh, Mayor Council here and with both uh, Prophet River and F N F N. Is that uh, I'd like to be able to usually meet sometime in the spring to um, explain. The annual performance plan, what we've agreed upon. We have letters of expectations with both our First Nations communities as well. Um, so it's, it's really an, an APP, but it's, it's worded a little differently. Um, but I would like to, to going forward, get an opportunity sometime in the spring to sit down with council. To uh, explain what our annual performance plan is, where we're going, uh, and what we, we came down to uh. Uh, you know, what we decided on, on moving forward with. And then um, I, I would like it sometime. Uh, going into the uh, next year, going in to the next uh. Not fiscal year, but into the, into the new year, I'd like to present a uh, a mayor's report uh. To uh, to, to Mayor Council. That's kind of the, the thought process anyways. Um, yeah, so is there any questions?
Any questions? Also, Gruen.
Yeah, thank you very much. I appreciate um, the three um, pillars that you're gonna be focusing on. Um, sounds like I'm. Really, really excited about building confidence in the community and enhancing community partnerships. We have a lot of um, not-for-profits that are working really, really hard. Um, so uh, just having. A member assigned to those as you see fit will be, I, I think, really, uh, um. They will really appreciate that, you know, just having that expertise sitting at the table. So, yeah, whatever we can do in terms of. The not-for-profit world, like, yeah, whatever we can be involved in or help you to um, integrate into that world. Because um, hasn't been my experience that we have seen much of that. Um, so yeah, so yeah, just let us know.
Yeah, thank you very much. It's uh, it's like I said, you know, being the, the main topic of our annual performance plan. Um, if the community doesn't know, doesn't see us, doesn't know what we're doing, um. How often they have an opinion of, of our organization and, and how much we contribute to. Uh, so it's, it's super important that, that we promote what we're doing, but also with that is that we, we are stakeholders and should be up to. And um, um, I, I think it's so important. So you're gonna start seeing a um. You're gonna start seeing, seeing our membership ending, participating and hopefully bringing some significant at the table in order to. Um, to forward, uh, not just our, it's, it's not right, the agenda's not right, but uh, the vision.
Sure.
Yeah, and I'm just to follow up, uh, there's a lot happening within our community too that your members might not be aware of either, right? So um, we can really, um, we have a lot of family programming happening outside of what the N R M does through the recreation department. So, yeah, we can share that information, um, leading to a healthier workplace for your members to have your time for the years that they're here.
Any other questions, comments?
Um, just, it's great to hear the annual performance plan, but um, do we have uh, enough staff members to carry that off? As I think about the conversations we have around the council table of expansion of highways and, you know, all this business going on. Would we have enough, do we have enough RCMP officers to facilitate what we're doing now? And if there was increased. Responsibilities for highway patrol, would we be able to facilitate that?
Good question. Um. From the contingency of manpower at the detachment right now is probably the, we probably have. The. What's the best way? We, we definitely uh. Are in, at a point right now where I don't think we've had the manpower here in the community, uh, in, in probably the past five years that we have now. Uh, we're, we're running at eighty or ninety percent right now, which is unheard of in North District right now. Um, and that's a lot to do with uh, with Sergeant Fletcher, prior to my arrival here. Working hard to attract new members to, to our detachment. Um, now, going forward, we will have um. Constables leaving this year. We have uh, two that are set for, uh, to leave this year. And a third that is kind of on the fence, but um, uh, we also have a fourth member that is extending for at least another year. Um, so those are all great things and, and it um, bodes well for the community when uh, you hear such great things about Fort Nelson. Um, but with saying that, we also have a new member just came in, uh, started on the weekend. House Wagona, just arrived from Belakula. He's a seven-year member that uh, brings a wealth of experience and hard-working fellow. He's gonna be training a new recruit. We have a, a new recruit coming from Depot uh, in April. And uh, Cospool Cardona, uh, and um, yeah, so we're just uh. We just have to kind of track along with the, with uh, our staffing pool. And uh, work hard to, to um, get more people to come up to Fort Nelson. Um, but we're, but uh, with saying all that, would we always like more members? Yes, of course. Uh, but right now, I think we're, we're, we're. We're, we're, we're staffed appropriately and uh, we're, we're looking good in our numbers right now.
Thank you, Jason. I also like to see the uh, the plan that, that the RCMP brings to communities uh, every year. So. Anytime you enhance community engagement, that's a, that's a, that's a, that's a good thing. I did want to bring up because I didn't hear it, although it might have been in the uh, increase the curfew checks of the known offenders. I know when I was running, I heard a lot about petty theft in the community, uh, theft, arson. And it's the only community that I know of that there's a Facebook page dedicated to, to a, a particular few, uh. You know, uh, repeat, repeat residents, repeat, repeat offenders. I guess it's, it's okay to say that, right? So, you know, I'm, I hope that that's, that this curfew thing is, is about that as well and, and, and trying to. Trying to pin down some of this or I, I fear for them. When I, when I keep, when I read some of the things I read on that Facebook page. We've got people this close to being vigilantes and, you know, and that's, you never want to see that in your community. So I hope that that's part of it. The other is I hope you'll work with us in the conservation uh, service with respect to wildlife in the community because that's. You know, that, that's becoming more and more, it's becoming an issue that, that people are speaking about all the time.
Fabulous. Yeah, that, and that's uh, and that's why obviously I'm looking for, for uh, for feedback and input. Because um, partnerships with the conservation service, that's a very simple thing to write in those both, because I know bear aware. Of course, we, with uh, with everything else uh, within the community and. We, we have such an amazing amount of wildlife in our backyard here. So, yeah, we'll definitely uh, look at that. Um. We have uh, we, we have a longstanding relationship with the conservation service here already. And I know we, we do patrols uh, up to a lot number of hunting camps with conservation come May and June, and June of this year. Um, we do uh, you know, we do joint ventures with them in relations to the May long weekend. And there's a number of other projects throughout the year, hunting season goes around. Um, so, so we'll be quite busy with them, but maybe more um. Um, structured and more, more uh, comprehensive, uh, looking at, uh, can be added to the U P Ps.
Yeah, but I mean, for sure, we want to be involved in that as well, right? Because it's, it is the community and there are a lot of people involved and, you know, we do have bylaws, we do have relationships with, with your agencies and so. You know, it's not just bears, it's, it's all kinds of wildlife that's, that's in the community that probably shouldn't be in the community. Um, and, and the potential for interactions, negative interactions, and particularly with the children. I've got lots of children traveling on the, on the roads and. Like you said, it's, this wildlife is in our backyard sometimes, literally, in our backyards. Um. There was one more thing that was on my mind and it's just, oh, if uh, if you need assistance, you know, um, recruiting. That's what we're all about, right? We're uh, we're, if you need assistance from me, if you'd like me to speak to somebody or. Talk to somebody, I'd, I'd be happy to do that if they need tours, you know, if uh. Uh, you know, we're all attached to different parts of the community and I'm sure that if there's interest, we can, we can show them what, what we have to offer here. To assist you.
I appreciate the offer. Uh, a significant, a very significant part of the community and have, of the enhanced community relationship. Is going to be the recruitment part of it. We will, I, I want to see our members getting up into the high school. And getting presentations out to uh, the grade elevens and twelves when, when they're doing their work programs. Um, making sure that people in the community understand, we have a wonderful thing now. And, and this is the first time the RCMP is, is actually, um, is ever actually acknowledged it and, and said that, don't make this happen. But we have um, an opportunity now for uh, for people to come back, officially come back to, to British Columbia. Um, and um, I can't make any promises, but there's even the, the, the rationale behind that. Is that we want people to come back to the areas where they, they, they're from, um, because that's where the expertise is, you know? And, and um, like, I, like, I can't say that we can guarantee that if you join from, from. From Fort Nelson, you're gonna come back to Fort Nelson, but maybe come back to the peace, maybe come back to Nor- Northern British Columbia. And we can, we can tell you, not without a hundred percent certainty, but for the most part, you're not gonna go to Surrey, you're not gonna go to Berkeley. Because for most of us, uh, you know, we, if that's not the type of policing we want to do, we want. We want to bring people that have the experience of living in Northern British Columbia back to Northern B C. So that's uh, that's something that just got announced last week. Um, I know what that, I had the opportunity to uh. I talked with our commanding officer, Dr. McDonald, uh, a couple of months ago, and he said this was a very big piece in, in order to uh. Get people to, to come back to, to the areas, regions and communities. So, so I'm very excited for that. Um, and um, further, um, about the prolific offender scientist. We all know that a small percentage of individuals in our community cause almost ninety percent of all, 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 all the issues here. Um, and that is um, not to say that the detachment isn't focused on, on, on those offenders right now. They are and they've done a very good job and they've done some hurry. Uh, they've had some very successful uh, investigations and brought. Forward a number of charges uh, in order to keep um, matter you're talking about under wraps and so on and so forth. Uh, but what we're gonna continue to do is that uh, we're gonna continue to focus on, on those individuals. We're gonna continue to focus on, it's our court orders in place, because we can hold them accountable to, uh, while they're in the community. And uh, we're gonna continue to, to drive that. And uh, that's gonna be, there's gonna be some, some tweaking and a little bit of change and stuff. Uh, but like I said, and that's gonna be uh, the mandate for the members and they're excited to uh. Go out there and make sure that uh, people are engaged in compliance.
So the last thing I have, uh, a comment that I have is that we're preparing a storyboard, I suppose, for. For a project that we're doing with an American company with respect to Fort Nelson and. And it's a visit, it's a video project. And I know that there are probably some American tourists that are a little bit nervous about traveling on the highway after the. Incidents that have happened a few years ago with those, with those two young guys, murders that they created on the highway, but. Um, maybe there'd be opportunity to include the RCMP in that in, in some way to, you know, because I mean, it's the Canadian Police Force, right? And, and I, you know, I, I don't, I wouldn't expect you to be out there red shirts, but you know, just maybe, maybe we can fit you. You know, into the story, into the storyboard somehow, so that we, we can get across that perspective, that this Alaska Highway is a safe place to travel.
We would love to.
Yeah.
Absolutely love to. Um, and we can also, uh, I can also speak with our media folk in relations to. Maybe some other strategies that Don has, Don Roberts has in relation to can assist uh, with your storyboard.
Good.
And, and red surge wise? Yes, we'd love to be out there in red surge. And so if you haven't got anything above, I am a bit of a traditionalist. I've been involved with the RCMP since nineteen ninety-one. My dad was an auxiliary. I grew up with, with uh, with, with regular members in Squamish, that's where I'm from, logging family. And um, I, 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 I hold our organization very, very close to my heart. And uh, but it's very important that uh, we, your seat is, is what we are, is, is Kansas Police Force. And the fact that if um, you know, don't joke about red surge, you want us to red surge, you can be there.
I'm just wondering if the uh, with that video, the, of, for uh, the tourism project. That it would be really good to include the RCMP in that, about mentioning the nine-one-one boxes that are along the highway. And the safety that, you know, we, we take safety seriously and the nine-one-one boxes are.
Yeah. So another little PSA with that is that um, and, and when I was up here before, we do it with something we ran to a block. Now with the iPhones, oh my goodness, this is uh, this is going to be an issue. Um, because they have that um. That collision monitor, monitor in there, so if you shake it really hard. We had one the other day where a person drops his phone, actually ran his phone over with his machine. Uh, and so it let those signals, so that.
I hate that when that happens.
I know, horrible, right? But, so what ended up happening was we, we ended up having to send number from here to Montreal. Uh, found the fellow and he goes, yeah, I ran my phone over and it's not working. Oh, great. So, but anyways, we drive back. So that's six, six and a half hours every day that uh, um, could be devoted to public safety here. Uh, but we have to make, we have to make sure that, that the person's. But still, I see significant issues with that. Um, the other thing that, that we've always seen this. Here is that um, you have folks are traveling through from Fort St. John up to Whitehorse or going to Yukon. So there's that, that area here is the secondary port, uh, Fort Nelson. And they go north and they have no cell service. And then we started getting phone calls, well, you know, grandma and grandpa didn't show up. And in Whitehorse and, well, how long ago did they leave Fort Nelson? Oh, about four hours ago. Well, wait, wait, wait till they. Wait, wait till they go to Watson Lake. But um, we all, we all, we all laugh, it's all great, but, but what happens is. Getting that PSA out there would be very important as well to make sure people understand there is no cell service on the highway. And that if you are traveling from Fort Nelson to Watson Lake, that um, you know, is it six, is it six hours? Six hours? That it's gonna be six, six plus hours before your loved one's gonna have cell service. So, um, so. You know, if you hold off until, until you give us a call, because we will go make sure they're safe, but uh, we like to, we like not to waste our.
One thing you brought up, um, maybe you can speak about it is, you know, I hear the auxiliary program is potentially being. Being uh, put back resurrected. Have you got any comments on that and whether it might reach here?
It is, we'll be here. Very excited. Um, so um, Jesse get consul Guinness, uh, Jesse Guinness is uh, gonna be heading up the auxiliary program. And uh, so. The program is going to be um, pretty much exactly the same as it was when it shut down. So the. The auxiliary member will be in full uniform. Um, they won't carry a sidearm, will be acknowledged as an auxiliary constable. And um, they will be able to be fully operational out with the, the regular member. And um, that's another huge aspect of our, our community engagement side of things, is we want to see our volunteers out there being part of the community as well. Um, so um, I believe that starting, I think it's this July is the transition over. Um, there's a, there's a whole process and um, um, it's been a head scratcher, but, but uh, they, they need the existing. Exhale's to retire, it can be re-upped into the new program. Uh, how that all, I don't know if that's a potential thing, how that's gonna work, work, but um, it looks pretty straight. Um, so we'll be looking at uh, at uh, one, taking our existing exorays. Who still would like to participate in the program, getting them re-upped into the program. And probably look going forward into the new year, or prob- oh, sorry, into the fall, we'll probably be looking at maybe what it looks like to, to have an auxiliary. Something that we haven't seen here for a long.
Yeah, good. Well, helps with the safety of your members and increases the, the eyes, eyes up there, yeah. Yeah, good. Anybody else? Yeah, go ahead.
I don't know if you know, but we're doing a lot of locally recruiting for our healthcare vacant positions. So we have hired a local recruiter. So we're developing a lot of material to recruit, but also once the person is here, so onboarding. So I'm just wonder, wondering if you're interested in gaining access to any of that material. We could maybe arrange that if you're interested.
Yes, okay. So with my previous detachment being, being Fraser Lake, one of the biggest things with, with that community was that people, one, didn't know where the community was. And two, didn't know what an amazing community it was to be a police officer. So our Facebook page was, is, because they're still operating it, please go look at it. Ours here in Fort Nelson will be a little bit different, because I'm going to utilize the newspaper on a monthly basis. But the, the actual Facebook page is to promote where we, where we work, where we live and, and the things we do. So it was very instrumental to getting three of the new police officers to transfer to the detachment. Will be the course of my three and a half years there, where they were able to go on to the Facebook page, see what we were promoting and what we were doing and opportunities that, that existed for them. And also a big part of that as well is, is I'm down to Cholak to P R T C, which is our training facility in Cholak next week. And lo and behold, next week I'll be making sure that I promote Fort Nelson detachment. So a lot of it's word, word of mouth within our organization. But I find the Facebook page or, or Twitter page is very important. And if we have those pieces, it, it, it makes my life so much easier. There was a gentleman here, Constable Tom Seaman. Tom was here a number of years ago. And he used to do a lot of pictures of the northern lights and go out there. He'd park on, is it Catherine Lake, the railway bridger? Eagle, Eagle Park out there. And he took some video of it and, and, you know, the, the feedback from people, you know, it's such an amazing area. And it's so cool and neat. And a lot of the members that are here have seen that and that's why they, they wanted the opportunity to come up to Fort Nelson.
Go.
I don't know if they're finished the welcome packages. Jaleen might know. I know that Diana was working with Bev, so hopefully we can get some to you. Because if they're done, you can take them next week with you.
And, and the other thing I, I'd like to, just to impress as well is that if you have any questions, concerns, anything such, I have no, no problem. I'll, I'll provide, go through Jaleen or Scott and you can have all my, my personal contact information. And call me anytime, because I'm really a firm believer that, that bilateral communication is, is the most important thing. And if I don't know if something is an issue within, within the community and people are, because a lot of people will come talk to you first before it comes to talk to me. I'd like, love the heads up and there's things that we can usually have at the pass. And hopefully come to some type of mutual solution, revolution.
Perfect. Great mayor too in Fraser Lake. He's awesome. Sarah's great, yeah. Okay. Well, I think if there's no further questions for Jason, I think then we are adjourned. Thank you very much, everybody.